I see this.
Good, I think it's your mind, but you got.
Everybody ready? I now call to order the committee work session of January, Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. Please rise for pledge allegiance in a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Lukens?
Here.
Mr. Bates?
Here.
Mr. Kernan?
Here.
Mr. Pilat?
Mr. Pilat is excused.
Ms. Whipke?
Here.
Mr. DeHarper?
Here.
Mr. Towsley?
Here. Do we have any communications from the public? We do not this evening. So we'll move on to committee of the whole. Letter A, 2022 OPWC resolution, Mr. Bates.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is allow, would allow the city to submit two grant applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission. The, the first one would be the resurfacing and reconstruction of a portion of Clark Mill Road, and then the second would be to complete the waterline loop from Johnson Road to the Metro Park entrance. Any questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. President, or whoever. Section one says four projects, yet the exhibit only has two projects, and that's all we're really talking about. So does this need to be corrected?
I've already corrected that, Mrs. Whipke.
Yeah?
On the resolution, yes.
Okay, and then, as far as the Eastern Road, Clark Mill Road, Norton Avenue, did you take care of that, too?
No, I didn't understand that.
Well, it says Eastern Road reconstruction, but I don't think it has anything to do with the Eastern Road, because that's on the other side of town. I think they mean the Clark Mill.
Was that just a typo?
It's on page six. I assumed it was just a typo, too.
So should, should that say Clark Mill?
Yeah, that, that was last year's legislation. You recall, we applied for Eastern Road reconstruction.
So it's only the two then, right?
Correct, there's only two projects.
And then also, in section two, it's talking about special assessments, yet we rewrote that 1040 codified last year to do benefit charges. So is this going to be an assessment, or is this going to be a benefit?
So the, the county prefers that language. Mr. Bates had sent me an email, goodness, was that Thursday? I apologize, I don't remember which day it was, asking that very question. And what we'll do is we will charge the tap-in fee in accordance with 1041 would be 30%. Now, we don't know what that is, because project construction bidding and all that would factor that in, but that's how we would, we'll do the same for Worcester. I'm sorry, it's not Worcester Road, it was the 2019 project that was just completed, and the Johnson Road that's under construction currently.
So we're going to follow the one we passed last year, or that was passed, anyway, and this will come back to us, yes or not, yes or no, when, before they're actually set, the fees are set, or?
No, no, all, all ordinances have to come back to you to be set. That's why those, the Johnson Road, the one that connects Worcester to Eastern, and then Eastern up to the Metro Parks, those haven't come before you, because the final cost of those projects are not done. But once they're done, we will bring those forward to you. But I can't bring them to you until the projects are completed.
So it'll come back to us with the actual amount?
Correct, and the contract award has to come back to you. So this is just the authorization to apply for the funding.
Right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? That I'd like to make a motion to add resolution number five, 2022, to the next agenda for a first reading.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Any more discussion? The clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Bates?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Towsley?
Yes. Letter B, CDBG application, Mr. Bates.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution would allow the city to submit another grant application to the Summit County Community Development Block Grant Program in order to help improve the Columbia Woods Playground to make it disability accessible. Any questions, comments?
Yes, again, what portion are we looking at that we would have to pay? Do we have any idea?
So if you, sorry, if you, if you recall, we applied last year for the same grant, but they decided that the county, they were going to use those funds for different purposes and didn't accept it. So now with the price of materials, what we envisioned is that $50,000 would cover the cost of the concrete pad at the current location of the playground. We would then be obligated to pay for the rubber material that would be poured in place, because that's what we're changing to the poured rubber. It's like a, essentially, it's a melted rubber, but it's, it's safer and it's more accessible for those with disabilities.
It's more like a rubber mat?
So that's what we're looking at, at our cost is $50,000? Or that be the total?
That would be the grant amount that we would be seeking from the county, and we'd be responsible for anything over that. And those funds would come from your land improvement fund, and I apologize, I cannot recall the number, is it 410?
You told me 410.
Is it 410? Okay. Then it's 410.
Thank you.
With that, then, I'd like to make a motion to add resolution number six, 2022, to the next agenda for a first reading.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bates?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Towsley?
Yes. Letter C, GPD Road Construction Observation Contract for 2022, that is mine. This is just what it says, it's a contract with GPD for the road program this year, for the 2022 road program. $28,500 of that is for the actual road program. Driftwood and Cherrywood, $92,250 will go toward that. My question I have, we're going to get a 50% reimbursement from OPWC. Is that on the $92,000 before or after the grant?
So, so we enter into a contract for the full amount. So that would be $92,000, 50% of that would be coming back. I want to, I just want to clarify, that's not to exceed. So if the project doesn't take that many hours, we wouldn't pay that full amount. It's an hourly contract, but they figure six to nine months for construction, and we'd rather be a little bit on the high side, but 50% of the money that they incur, or the costs that they incur for that project will be reimbursed to the city.
Okay, thank you.
So might I understand that it's $92,250 is actually going towards just Driftwood and Cherrywood?
That's not to exceed, they expect a six to nine month construction on those two projects.
But that, that was the money we're looking at for those two roads?
Not to exceed, correct. For the inspection, just the inspection.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'd like to make a motion to, to add ordinance seven, 2022, to council's next agenda.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Towsley?
Yes.
Mr. DeHarper?
Yes.
Thank you. Letter D, sell Union Street property, this is mine as well. So back in November, the council voted to actually sell the property, and it went out to an auction. We had one bidder for $8,000 who did win the auction, so this is just us agreeing to come through on our part. Is there anything else the administration would like to add to that, or?
No, I think the, the folks that were the bidder, the successful bidder, have property in the city, have, have maintained their property, there's been no issues with their property, so we saw no reason for us not to accept their, oh, bit.
And with that, I, I know the plans, because this was actually done in December, and we're now halfway through January, I may be asking to waive a reading down the road just so they can get going with their construction. I think they're trying to bring in an elderly parent. So I'd like to get out of their way if, if possible. Any other discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd just like to add that this property, these properties, actually, five parcels is located on the corner of 23rd and Union. For the public's behalf, I believe the buyers live catty-cornered to that property.
That's correct.
And it's in Barberton, right? Or is that Norton?
That's Norton.
It's, it is Norton. It's in the middle of Barberton.
It'll actually be a really nice improvement to that neighborhood, considering what was there. Any other discussion? I'd like to make a motion to add ordinance number eight, 2022, to council's next agenda with emergency language.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Towsley?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Letter E, legal defender contract, and that's Mr. Kernan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a contract that we have to enter into every year with the legal defenders to provide legal defenses for those who do not have the ability to pay. Really, there's, it's something we have to do every year, we don't have a lot of choice. Contract really has not changed from last year, it's basically the same contract, but we do it at the beginning of every year.
Any questions from council?
I would move to add ordinance number nine, 2022, to the next agenda for a first reading.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second. Is there any more discussion? The clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. DeHarper?
Yes.
Mr. Lukens?
Yes.
Letter F, Orianna House contract, that's safety, Mr. Kernan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is kind of the same thing. Every year, we enter into a contract with Orianna House in order to provide community correctional services. Again, this contract is the same, really, as it was last year, but again, every year we have to do this in order to provide those services. So we will be looking to pass that for that reason.
Do we have any further questions or discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Have the fees changed? I didn't get a chance to go back and compare these to the last.
I don't think that they have. I, I talked with Mr. Fowler this morning, and the fees on the last contract and this contract are the same. We're actually going to be looking at possibly trying to get a longer term contract, so we don't have to do this at the beginning of every year. That hasn't happened yet, so I will move to add ordinance number 10, 2022, to the next agenda for a first reading.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. DeHarper?
Yes.
Mr. Lukens?
Yes.
Thank you. Letter G, Mr. Lukens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I would like to introduce ordinance number 11-22, which is basically the boards and commissions personnel. If we have a list in here of all the different names, whether or not they're appointed or reappointed. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Mr. Lukens, would you mind just reading the, the list just for the, the record?
Sure, absolutely. So we have Sandy Croissant, Ward Two, which is a reappointment for Board of Zoning Appeals. We have James, I'm going to try and say this right. Pecarick.
Yes.
Ward Four, appointment for the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have Joshua Smith, Ward Three, an appointment on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have Jack Gaynor, an appointment with the Tax Incentive Review Council. We have Justin Markey, a reappointment with the Income Tax Board of Appeals. We have Suzanne Boyer, a reappointment with the Income Tax Board of Appeals. We have Lorraine Kerbawi, an appointment with the Income Tax Board of Appeals. We have Peggy Dobbins, a reappointment with the Civil Service Commission. We have Bill Bremen, a reappointment with the Architectural Board of Review. We have Josh Slaga slash she's a designee for a reappointment Architectural Board of Review. And then we have Kevin Breck, an appointment on the Architectural Board of Review.
Thank you, Mr. Lukens.
I had some questions. Are these all paid boards, and, and can we get a listing of the pays for each one?
They are not all paid boards.
They are not all?
They are not all paid boards, that's correct.
Not the Turk and?
The Architecture Review Board, nor the Turk. I think the only ones that are paid are those identified in the charter, which would be planning, zoning, civil service, and parks.
And were these advertised? The openings?
We've been advertising for, and that was the one thing I wanted to make mention, not to speak for Justin, but I will. But again, he would be happy to step down immediately if we found someone with the qualifications to serve on the Income Tax Review Board. We had an additional one, but we had a resignation. We could have replaced him, but, so if you happen to know someone, I know I've talked to one councilman about some replacers.
What one was that?
The Income Tax Review Board.
And then, who's on the Turk now? I, as I understand it, I think the other, last one, it ended, hadn't it, last year? The last Turk member?
No, Mr. Spiezak was appointed for a three-year term, and I was an annual term until we could find a replacement.
Okay. And when did they last meet?
They meet annually, typically in May.
When did they last meet?
I, I don't know.
And then, Mr. Kevin Breck for the Architectural Board of Review, is he a resident?
Yes, he is.
Excuse me?
Yes, he is.
Thank you. I'd be done.
Anybody else?
So I have a question. What's the easiest way that people can find the information if they were interested in filling a, an empty position? Like, is there a way online? Are we listing these online?
I think West City website.
They can find them on there?
Yes.
We're in the process of putting together a board application on the website, so someone who's interested can submit that application with some information. I know Mr. Towsley and I spoke, some of these members, it would be helpful if we had a little bit of information on them, and we feel like that would be a way for people to express interest going forward, so.
Thank you.
And we know Civic Plus has that capability, so it's just a matter of getting it implemented.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions? I would like to move to add ordinance number 11-22 to council's next agenda with emergency language.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Lukens?
Yes.
Mr. Bates?
Yes.
Thank you. Letter H, boundaries, ward adoption. That's actually Mr. Pilat's, but it comes to me. This is part of the census, we, we had to redo our boundaries in our wards. I guess my question for the administration, I don't see a whole lot of change. Was there any?
There were no changes, and that was the recommendation of the consultant. And we had, if you recall, Mr. Towsley, when we had discussed some of the new houses that were coming on, there was no, there, there was no way to, to adjust the boundaries to adjust for those. So we, it was his recommendation to leave it as it is.
Okay, another question I have is we annexed some property on Eastern Road. Does that need to be on that map, even though it's, it's not really for voting, it's businesses?
We will make sure that that is added to the map. I don't know that he was aware of that change.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, Mr. President. If I have this right, didn't the Ohio Supreme Court just rule that they had to redo their maps?
The state, yeah, the state commission, there's a bipartisan state commission that had to redo their maps, that's correct.
So does that affect us in any way?
No, no, what, what we are required to do under the charter is to look at the census blocks essentially after the census is done, and then reapportion the wards if necessary. The consultant reviewed the census blocks and determined that they're pretty evenly distributed as they are, so there's no changes needed. But it does not impact us.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, with that, I will make a motion to add ordinance number 12, 2022, to council's next agenda with emergency language.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Towsley?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Letter I, CTL Contract Service, that is mine. This is a contract for planning and of Johnson Road that will be done this spring for $40,420, 80% of which will be funded by AMETS. Is there any questions?
This is just for observation, right?
Correct. And, and just so council's aware, with ODOT projects, the company that designs the project is not able to oversee the construction. So we are obligated to do an RFQ and go through this process. CTL had performed observation on Worcester Road, and that's why they were selected. I will have another one coming before you, hopefully at the next committee for Johnson Road. It'll be a different firm, only because both projects will be going at the same time, and we should have a different observer overseeing those projects.
You said for Johnson Road, is this one not for Johnson?
I'm sorry, Barber Road, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Johnson and Barber, too many road projects going.
Understand, thank you. Any other questions? I'd like to make a motion to add ordinance 13, 2022, for council's, to council's next agenda.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Towsley?
Yes.
Mr. DeHarper?
Yes.
Thank you. Letter J, towing fees, that's safety, Mr. Kernan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance amending section 404.07 of our current ordinances. And what this does, the only thing it really changes is raises the administrative fee, the impound fees, from $50 to $80, and that kind of brings us into the same level as Barberton's. So that's really the only thing that's changing in this ordinance.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President. And this also, this also is this, the $15 a day story, that's staying the same, correct?
Yes.
And since this is kind of related to a previous question I had asked, I'm going to ask it again. Are we putting in an impound lot?
No decision has been made. We're evaluating whether or not it's beneficial to the city and the residents to move forward.
I was just wondering, because they sure have been doing an awful lot of work down there on that property, and we have the separate fenced-in area with some vehicles and miscellaneous things in it. There's rows of dirt piles along with various separate dirt piles. There's gravel piles, there's piles of concrete and such, and we have a road being built on a created hill to the north that goes nowhere, and lots of leveling being done over there. So it kind of looks like we're doing a little bit more than thinking about doing something.
Where are you referring to?
Down at the service garage.
Isn't the, the dirt and stuff down there, like the extra road dirt, kind of like a storage area?
I, I believe that was, and I, I don't, I don't want to misspeak, so I'm cautious, but I believe that was from the Cleveland Maslin Road project, but I, I, I'm not certain.
No, something, it went, if it was from Cleveland Maslin Road, it would have grass growing on it, and it doesn't. There's plenty of other hills of dirt down there that does have plenty of things growing on it, and what about that hill going to no, the hill, the road going up the hill to nowhere?
Is that, we were talking about where the railroad tracks us?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's not the city's property, is it?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to the question, so.
It's coming off of our property.
There, I, I'm not sure where, where you heard, Ms. Whipke, but we have no plans, as of right now, to put an impound lot at the service garage. There's no work being done at the service garage, as you allege, for this impound lot.
Lot done since the last time I was there, well, outside the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I move to add ordinance number 14, 2022, to council's next agenda with emergency language for a first reading.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. DeHarper?
Yes.
Mr. Lukens?
Yes.
Thank you. Letter K, local government services, finance, that's Mr. Bates.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 15, 22, this would be for us to engage the Ohio Auditor to prepare the city's 2021 audit. This is due to the Government Finance Officers Association, or it's due to them by June 30th. It's going to take about five to six months to complete. Ms. Keener has asked, and I would support waiver of second and third readings with emergency language to give us time to get that done. That, that June 30th is a hard deadline.
Any other questions or comments from council?
It's actually for the CAFER, not the audit, though.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, this, has, has the price changed, or this sounds about the same?
It went up a little bit, but it actually would have been up a lot more if I hadn't been able to save some by doing some of the sections of the CAFER myself.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, I'd like to move to add ordinance number 15, 2022, to the next agenda with a waiver of second and third readings with emergency language.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bates?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Towsley?
Yes. Letter L, transfers, that's finance, Mr. Bates.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance would allow, would authorize just certain transfers we do every year from the general fund to various other funds. These are detailed on Exhibit A on page 96. This is just to fund some of our, our different programs, capital, capital projects.
Any questions or comments? None?
I'd move to add ordinance number 16, 2026, to the next agenda for a first reading.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bates?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Towsley?
Yes. Does anybody have any topics for next work session?
Well, I had a question about, I remember way back when, because I know we were saying that we couldn't do the charter amendments until November. It's not that we can't, didn't we decide not to?
So whenever, whenever council decides to pass its ordinance, they can only be placed on the November election, so that's a state law. Regardless of our charter, the, all charter amendments have to go on in accordance with the Ohio Constitution during the November general election. So you can pass them earlier, I think our point was that you had time, there was no rush, and if you get done by August, then that should allow you time to submit in November, if that's what you choose to do.
However, one driven by petition, that can go on within like 60 days, or?
Well, if it's a petition, then it goes to a special election.
Right.
Potentially, yeah.
Anytime.
Yep.
And then also, we've got the Brookside Development Tap-In Fees. Have we made any progress? And then also, we've got the Brookside Development Tap-In Fees, have we made any progress on that? There was supposed to have been discussion going between the developer and the city on the sewer and water tap-in fees for them and I haven't, we haven't heard anything more about it, so I was kind of wanting an update on it.
I guess I don't understand how you can set fees for a project that's still under construction.
Well, we were supposed to be talking about it, well, yeah, okay, isn't Clark Mill still under construction? Cedar Ridge? And yet they had fees set.
The infrastructure work was completed. The infrastructure work related to the water line is not complete.
So the water and the sewer lines haven't been put in yet for Brookside?
The water line that the city is putting in is not complete.
Wonder, and if I recall correctly, they were supposed to, on our TIF agreement, the first two years of it, the city was going to get all like ninety-five percent, I think it was, and the developer was going to get the five percent. Did that start once that first house was, I don't know, even know if it's finished? But when did that, when does that start? And then is there a, when there a limit as to how many houses they were supposed to actually put up in that two years? In our agreement? So I'd like to know when those are going to be, when that timeline starts.
Yeah, when the exemption application is approved by the state and then the homes are built and then the value is placed on the tax duplicate, that's when the revenue will start to flow. There's no limit on the number of houses, but there was an estimate, there was a developer's estimate of how those houses would be built out under their construction schedule. But however quickly they get built, the revenue is shared the same.
I have written down here, I also wanted to remind council that we are still looking for someone to fill the position as representative for the MAD Board. So if anybody has an interest, I know there's been some looking into it, please let us know.
Mr. President, when's the next meeting? We had one last week, right?
There was one last Thursday, Mrs. Mullins, are you aware of when the next meeting is?
There is going to be a MAD meeting on February tenth, which is Thursday at six o'clock.
February tenth, Thursday at six o'clock, I'm just repeating for people to hear. Anybody else have any topics for next work session? Or anything in general? With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.